All right, it's 6:31. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. First things first, we have public comments, 15 minutes, but we have nobody in attendance, so we'll move right along. Agenda review, I know Patty's got a couple of things.
Need to add a non-public small letter K and C for Andy. Under 9C, if we could add vehicle replacement. And I have a couple of, one or two informational items.
Okay, anybody else? Patty, could we do a 9D and just get a very brief update on the audit progress? Okay. Okay, we can do it next time. We'll just plan on it for next time. I know last time that I... Okay, okay, good. All right, okay, moving on then. We have minutes from August 1st.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as amended, and I'd like to make two amendments. Once I find the file. Looks like Sandy on... I highlighted it, hold on. Page nine. If I'm reading this right, on the non-public session, it just looks like my vote is not there. So it says on both going, it's the motion to go into non-public and the motion to come out of non-public. It says Ms. Camello, yes. Ms. Dean, yes. Mr. Gauss, yes. Ms. Manzelli. I was a yes. And then on the motion to end non-public, it says the same thing. It just says, I was a yes on that. So that would be my two amendments, and with those two amendments, I would move to approve.
Is there a second? All right. Any other, any other comments or corrections? All right, then all in favor of approving the minutes of August 1st as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Patty opposed, and I'll abstain. All right, we will do abbreviated version of board reports. We don't have Josh, did he?
Do you want me to read it or do you want to?
Let me see if I can pull it up fairly... Oh, you want me to? Okay, so Mr. Coffin sent us an email. He said, "The summer came and went very quickly, and we are excited to welcome staff back and welcome the students back on Tuesday. Since we last spoke, the facilities department has been busy. Fields are ready for athletics, playgrounds are ready for recess, and the buildings are ready for staff and students. The facilities crew has been amazing making all of this come together. The gas boilers are all but done at PA. There's a small punch list to be completed. The last step will be the fire up, which will take place in a month or so. The fire panels have had their annual tests at PA, TRS, and PHS. The fire extinguishers have had their annual test to include the kitchen hoods at PA, TRS, and PHS. PHS had some sidewalk repair completed by their bike rack and heading up Belanger Drive. The new zero-turn X-Mark mower has been received and is already at work on our fields and properties. TRS has three new bathroom countertops, replacing ones that were aging and in need of a facelift. PHS has two new access control points installed. This will allow entry in those areas to be gained by staff's key fob, thus controlling who's coming and going. And the facilities crew completed some of their annual training as a group. We completed the AHERA two-hour asbestos training, workers' right-to-know, universal precautions, color coating of microfiber rags, suicide awareness, and bullying sensitivity. We'd also like to thank Ms. Sherman, as she provided the crew their lunch. Kimball's casserole pizza and sandwiches were served. Thank you, Mrs. Sherman. Please let us know if you have any questions. Thank you, Josh." Okay, Jean isn't here. Does anybody else at SAU Board? Is there, has there been since August?
Exec Board meets on the 13th, and we'll have our draft SAU budget that night. And I have the audit updates on that agenda, so as next time we meet, you'll have the updated information.
All right. And we've got our principals from the first day of school. Start with Ms. Gary today.
No, all right. Maybe because it's been, you know, first day of school, you check your step count. It goes up real quick. So obviously, today was the first day of school. We had an amazing start to the day. For us, it was just grades first through fourth grade that came into the building today. We have our official first day for kinders starting tomorrow, but we had all aboard this morning. One of my favorite days. They just walk in, and they're nervous, and they're excited, and they're all dressed up. And they have the dresses and the shoes and the backpacks, and you hear every story under the sun. So it's, it was a great day and a great way to start the day. So they came on the buses. We met with parents in the cafeteria for about 25 minutes. The kiddos went back to the classrooms, kind of got introduced there, and then came on up. We have, one of the things that we're very proud of is we currently have one of the top four finalists for New Hampshire Teacher of the Year, Liz DuKlo. I'm sure you saw that press release came out. So we're very excited about that. They've indicated that they'll be in the building the end of September for about three hours or so. So they, we have a whole agenda we got to put together for them. They've asked to see her in action. They've asked to meet with parents and students and staff and administration. So that's, I think that's just a great thing, not only for Liz, but for Hill School as well. It brings everybody in and gives us a chance to kind of share out the amazing work that all staff are doing. So that's something we're very excited about. Today, we had, we had our first para training. I don't know if you remember, but last year we had talked about wanting to get our paras in the building. One day a month after school, we decided to do it on the day we have a school board meeting, I think, because I'm already here, so we could just keep it going. It was phenomenal. I can't tell you how exciting it is to be able to sit with them outside of the stress of the day and be able to kind of, today was just a question and answer period for them, and really get to hear from them, see what they need. So we're, I'm very excited for that. That was an opportunity that we're very happy that we were able to provide this year. We have our new phone system and announcement system. It is very loud, which is amazing. So we have to kind of work out some of those kinks, but we're very appreciative that you guys allowed that to happen. For me, safety was a number one priority. I feel like at any moment, if I needed to, I could pick up a phone from anywhere, make the all calls that we need and things like that. So the safety aspect of it is great. We're still learning the kinks of it, so it's a little bit different, and apparently it can do just about anything. So we'll have a little bit of fun with that later on. It can play music and sounds. I think you guys already do some of that. We've never done that, so we're excited about it. Next week, we have our safety week. We kind of borrowed that from what TRS did in the past. So next week, we will do clear hallways, evacuation, reverse evacuation, and scandals. It worked really well to get the kids just kind of explaining what that is and having them practice one each day. And then I think the last thing for us is arrival and dismissal. Knock on wood, went really well today. I owe, obviously, a lot of that to the staff and the procedures and stuff they put in place, but I'm very thankful to the parents and how they really helped support that by following all of the things that we've asked and stuff. So we were able to get the kiddos in and out. And one last thing, we did have meet and greet last week. We had, the architects were in, they set up a table. They provided the graphics. I don't know if you had a chance to see them in big. And then they also had a little flyer to hand out. You know, when you guys talk about it, I think we have some feedback from that and some different things that we think eventually maybe we could bring to the committee to help just kind of with that. But it was nice to have them there and answer questions.
Questions for Wendy.
Question about the all aboard. I heard a parent comment about, yeah, it's so cool. As far as we know, we're like the only school that does that. And I would like to amplify that bragging point, but you know, only if it's true. Do you know, is that, is that like a common thing that all elementary schools do, or is it really rare?
I would say, I would say not common. I haven't heard of a school that's done it. I know when I came on board, it was something that had been done in the past with Village that they felt was a really great start to the year. We didn't do it for COVID, and then we decided to bring it back. We do get really good feedback from it, which is why I think we kept it going. But I don't, I haven't heard of any other schools that have done it.
Others? I had a two. Do you have an open house date?
It's the 27th and 28th.
And then, just to put it back on your radar, Budget Committee reached out and still would like to do a tour this fall sometime.
Yep, absolutely.
We're, I think we're thinking if we can do two time slots, one during the day for people that can do that, and then there'll obviously be plenty that can't because they're working. So if we could do like one after school and one during school, but you know, around your schedule, we don't want to go crazy, but.
Yep.
Show off how packed that place is.
You want to show off, yeah, how packed it is. I would recommend kind of first thing, maybe in the morning, just trying to get, it depends on how many people it is, but yeah, we'd definitely be able to set something up.
I'll, I'll work with Jean and Patty and you through email to get dates passed over to Mark, and we'll work it all out. Awesome. Thank you very much. We'll move over to Mr. McCarthy. Hopefully, the first day of school didn't scare him away.
So we had an amazing first day. Our step-up day for fifth grade last week really paid benefits for our fifth graders because they walked in today like they owned the place. So we started off in a very good spot with them. I was very impressed by how the staff today was all hands on deck. Everyone was at doorways and main crossing points to get kids who are kind of looking at the ceiling and looking at the schedule, trying to figure out where they needed to go, and a lot of kind faces helped them along the way. Our second floor staff really toughed it out today. It was quite warm up there, but they were so excited by the kids being there today that it really did impact them until the end of the day, where you could see that they were quite sweaty. So we had a good, good day there. Lunches went really smoothly, and so kids all had a chance to sit down, socialize a little bit, kind of debrief on how the day went. And so a lot of smiling faces there. Recesses went really smoothly for them too. A lot of, it wasn't a whole lot of activity, a lot of walking and talking and very slow motion four-square, which I participated in with some sixth graders today, which was a lot of fun. Buses went really smoothly today. We had a couple of late buses, but that's par for the course on the first couple of days. Students waited patiently as the buses came up, and then, you know, at the end of the day, the custodians, I walked with my night custodians, and the building almost was in perfect condition the way you walked in. Kids did a really nice job treating it respectfully today. Bathrooms were as clean as bathrooms could be at a middle school level on a first day, so that was terrific. So we're really excited about day two tomorrow.
Awesome. Any questions for Mr. McCarthy? Oh, and do you have a open house date? I think I saw it in the email already.
Yes, open house is the 21st.
Great. Thank you very much. And Dr. Morris?
Okay, good evening, everyone. First day of school today went very well. We had two hours for just our freshmen to walk through their schedules, and I think that they were very appreciative of that. It was nice to have a lot of hands on deck to kind of help them. To include our student leaders, we had class officers and National Honor Society members and key club members who kind of were in different spots through the hallways during that time. And it was like, just if someone looks lost, just ask them if they need help. And they were great. I want to also recognize our Teacher of the Year from last year. We presented that award to the staff last week, and that was Renee Pauquette. Renee has been at PA for, I want to say it's something like 24 years or so. She's an English teacher. She primarily teaches 10th grade and 11th grade English, and she's, she's a great asset to our community. We also have a Spartan of the Year of the Year, and this most recent recipient was Kelly Menzwar, who is an administrative assistant in the Exceptional Services Department and was a member of the NEAS Steering Committee and did a tremendous amount of work. And I was happy to hand that off to her and know, you know, confident that that was going to get done. So congratulations to both of them. In anticipation, our open house is September 13th. And a few, a few more things just to share. One is, as you know, parking, and it is quite an event. And Robyn Barubi puts in a lot of work in that. I just want to recognize her for that. We actually had a parent who was very desperate to get a parking space and suggested that they could provide a $1,000 donation. And I said, "That is not a transaction we're going to do." So, but anyway, Robyn is, Robyn is great after that. Lastly, we have, we've been fortunate to have an Adult Ed grant through the state, and unfortunately, they informed us that we no longer qualify for that grant. The reason for that is we don't have any adults in our Adult Ed program. It's a, it's a popular program, and we have a lot of students that are in that. And in many ways, it's a, an additional alternative pathway to graduation. And it's open to adults, and we've had adults who have contacted our offices to inquire about it, but they don't follow through. And so when the state representative said, "Well, you don't, it's not an Adult Ed program," it's a valid point. So with that said, it does serve an incredible need for us, particularly when you consider that, you know, we no longer have PACE, and having an alternative pathway in our building is really helpful. So that grant represented about $30,000. Eddie Collins, the Adult Ed Director, and I have met, and Patty and I have talked about this. And that's not going to mean a $30,000 request in next year's budget. We've looked at ways that we can address that. Part of that is changing Eddie's hours so that he's providing some of that supervision at night rather than paying someone to do that. Also, what was, a program that also fell under that grant was PYL. So in anticipation, what you're going to see when we go through the budget process is a figure probably close to $7,000 to support PYL in lieu of that grant, and probably another figure of about $5,000 to support Adult Ed. And we've looked at some ways that we can do that. We, we're not going to be able to offer the kind of, you know, robust selective options we had in Adult Ed. That was kind of a nice to have, not a, we need it. And we're kind of at a point where we need to really just pick the things that we need for Adult Ed. So just, you know, looking ahead, that's unfortunate news for us, but the state does have a good argument there. And so that'll be coming down the bike.
Awesome. Thanks. Any questions?
Just day one, but what's the early indication of the vaping scene?
We did not have any vaping in the building today that I'm aware of. We did have a suspension for a student who was in possession. So it's, and you know, quite honestly, one of the issues that we see is when they, when students are transitioning, reentry can be hard, right? And they've developed a lot of bad habits in terms of frequency over the summer, and that can be very challenging for us to curb that when they come back in the building, and it's more structured and it's more supervised. So we'll, I'm anticipating that we'll struggle with that for a little bit. You're welcome.
Others? All right, thanks, everybody. Last report is Hill School Update. I guess I'll start with Melanie, but if anybody else went to meetings, including Sandy, if anybody wants to chime in, Wendy, anybody?
So I'll let Carrie talk a little bit. I had to miss the last one on August 15th. I had something come up unexpectedly. There's a meeting on Zoom on the 7th, right, September 7th, Thursday, and Carrie will attend that. And then September 14th, I do have the night off from work, and Carrie and I will attend that. And that will be the interview process for the construction manager. And then I'll let you guys fill in from the 15th if you have anything.
Right, aye.
Is the, sorry. I've been desirous of, you know, just sort of observing, but just scheduling-wise, it's difficult for me. But Zoom is easier, so my radar kind of pricked up there. What are the logistical details?
On the 7th, it's at 4:00. And then on the 14th, I don't think we'll be doing Zoom. They'll be back in person, and that's at 3:00.
And how does someone find the Zoom link?
The meeting is not a Zoom meeting. The, it's in-person. The architect has to be remote. So we're not setting it up as a, like a public link. If that makes sense. They, they need to go over and present us with some of the applications, I think, so that we can look at them and figure out who we're going to interview, but they can't be there.
So on the 15th, I did fill in for Melanie, and we discussed some more, just a few tweaks, a few more tweaks. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah. We discussed a few more tweaks, and then a lot of the discussion was around the following meetings when we're going to start interviewing the construction managers. I think there was just some discussion about where bath going to be and excitement about bathrooms.
Lots of excitement. They had, the previous meeting, they had taken some feedback, and we kind of really got into the nitty-gritty of pretty much like the administrative suite, like where the special education conference rooms would be, where the bathrooms would be, switching the nurses suite and stuff like that. So they did a really good job. It was interesting because usually there's, when we talk, when they ask a question, there's like a barrage of feedback. They didn't really have any. Everything they presented to everybody kind of met the approval. So they really listened and spent a lot of time being thoughtful with that. So everything's intentional with it.
I've been a little bit out of the loop on this. I know that there was discussion about a change in the building aid process, and there was discussion that that might change things. Or, right now, and I know this is not set in stone, but is it still the intention to bring the bond in March, or is it not going to be until the following year, as far as we know?
That's going to be something the board's going to need to decide. It would be unlikely that you would get building aid if you do it this year, unfortunately. The, our architectural firm is still on the committee with the Department of Ed, and they haven't written the rules yet, so it's not set in stone. But it looks like the new process, if they're going to tell you in advance how much you're going to get, it means there's going to be a gap year where there's nothing, and that's what they're anticipating. We don't know yet, but if that happens, then you'll need to decide how you're going to proceed.
Okay. Anything else on that topic?
When the question was asked about the building aid in the preschool, and if that does discourage us or not, I don't know the word, make us not eligible for that, the architect was, he explained it as layman as he possibly could, but it, the way that we are proceeding, we will still be able to get that building aid, even though preschool is going to be in the same building. So that was one thing I know we had asked last time.
A takeout, if you're using this amount for preschool, they deduct that from what you would be able to qualify for. It's not like they'll scrap the whole thing if you have preschool in there is the way I understood it. Yeah.
A question about, is this the entire conversation about Hill School renovation for tonight?
It is.
Okay. Well, then, I'm concerned that apparently there wasn't any information at Old Home Day about the Hill School renovation, which I understood was the architect's responsibility to make happen. And I thought that that flyer that Carrie was helpfully demonstrating was going to have images depicting like future concepts, not, you know, our current school. So I'm interested in, in an update as to like what all happened there, because sooner or later, I would like the voters to pass this, and that's going to depend on really great promotions, in part, on really great promotions.
So that was part of the feedback I was kind of talking to you with. We did, we did get the flyers to Old Home Day. We had a staff member that took them, so I'm just curious. I'll follow up with that. And we had a couple of parents come through, and when they grabbed them, said, "Oh, I got this at Old Home Day." So I'm not sure, I think that follow-up, I can definitely take a look at. The feedback you said about, "We got this," like kind of last minute from the architects, and that was pretty, yeah, rough. So one of the things that people shared was they would have liked that draft piece. I did send that out in the September family newsletter. So my goal, and I just kind of ran it by Patty just to make sure, is to make sure that any updates and things like that are in our monthly family newsletter, but that just goes to our families. So I switched out these graphics, put in anything that had the actual draft on it. I think my feedback, because I was standing next to the architects during meet and greet, definitely an awareness of it, I would say, is not necessarily there. There weren't a lot of people asking questions. I mean, they had huge signs up. We were giving out the flyers and stuff like that, but not a lot of people engaged and asked questions. So those are kind of the biggest things on my end that I noticed standing there.
Anything else? All right. All right. Agenda item number six is a discussion of strategic planning. We've got Mr. Charles Crush. You prefer Chuck? Okay. So Chuck was introduced to us through Melanie, and to sort of level set, and I've shared this with, with him already. You know, we've had obviously some discussions in the past about strategic planning and what the board may or may not want to do, and how that might differ from goal-setting that we already do. And so Mr. Crush, he is, this is his expertise. So I've asked him to come and just kind of share what he does and what sort of options we might have for a strategic planning type process and things like that. So it's kind of a general discussion. He's got a bit of a presentation, and then we can kind of just roundtable it. And anybody that's got questions about how the process might work or anything, we can just kind of have a little back and forth. Thank you so much for being here.
Question. Can I move this? Or is there a way I can be, advance the slide, or? You can advance them? All right, cool. All right. Let's see if I can get this right. All right. First of all, I'm Chuck Crush, and it's, it's an honor to be here with you all tonight. As a former school board member of the Concord School District, I heard a lot of great things. First of all, congratulations on Teacher of the Year, I believe previously, and a pending Teacher of the Year, is that what I heard in, in talking, a possible Teacher of the Year candidate. So congratulations on celebrating your staff. I didn't know it was going to be the first day of school I get to be here. And I wore the blazer to be professional, but I didn't know it was going to be 90 degrees either. So really, I did not know that. Congratulations very much. Congratulations. So, and I've been here actually for some sports stuff for my kids and things like that. So, but I've never been to the library, so thank you. So I'm going to talk a little bit, do a brief presentation about kind of what I do and what I can offer. I know you're kind of beginning, or I'm understanding you're beginning your journey and kind of looking at strategic planning, goal-setting, and things around that topic. And I'm certainly going to go through and just talk a little bit about kind of services I provide and what I've done in the for-profit, not-for-profit, and municipal sectors. So, okay, a goal without a plan is just a wish. Next slide, please. So that's self-explanatory. Hang on one sec. Okay. What is the vision you all see for the Pembroke Schools District? What story will you tell? What mountain will you climb? I do a lot of analogies between mountain-climbing, planning, and strategic planning. So, you know, and I don't know where you are in your journey. You all volunteer, school board members, you all volunteer your time to come here. And as a former school board member, you think, at least I thought a lot about the legacy I was going to leave. Like, what am I going to do when I'm off the school board? You know, when I'm done with this? You know, you come to meetings, you do committee meetings, you hear from parents, you hear from stakeholders. But long-term, what legacy are you going to leave? What mountain will you climb? Next slide, please. Okay, so I see my role of a, of a planning Sherpa, kind of being a guide. What, what will, what will we discover? And sometimes we may start out thinking we're going to discover something, or thinking we want to go in one direction, and through our investigation process or our fact-finding, through our due diligence. And through our investigation process or our fat finding through our due diligence, we may go in a very different direction. That's like. Okay, a little bit about my background. So 25 years of leadership and planning experience. By training and profession, I'm a healthcare executive. I am, and I've submitted my resume for everyone's review. I have two roles. I'm the CEO of New England Homes for the Deaf, which is a assisted living nursing home and independent housing home for deaf and deaf blind seniors in Massachusetts. In addition to that, I'm a co-founder of Austria Counseling and Consulting, Astera. I'm a former school board member of the Concord School District and I have spent years facilitating for profit, not for profit, strategic planning, goal session, goal setting strategies. I'm also a graduate of the Geisel School of Medicine Institute of Leadership, where we're a part of Dartmouth, where we focused on strategic planning for physicians and non-physician executives. So next slide, please. So the process. Building a roadmap to the future. I'm big on asking questions. I was probably drove my other school board members crazy when I served on the Concord School District School Board because I was famous for asking the multiple whys. Why do we do it that way? Why do we fund this? Why do we not fund this? Why do we do the school calendar that way? As part of any strategic planning, as part of any goal setting, why is the big part of the story? I like to ask three whys. Why, why and and why? So, you know, why do this? Why put energy into strategic planning? And we'll get to that in the next slide, I believe. So what are the benefits? Direction. How many of you have ever said you want to do something, you know, in the next five years, I'm going on this vacation to the West Coast? I want to go see the Pacific Ocean. I want to go on that Alaskan cruise. However, if you don't plan, if you don't start gathering information, if you don't start planning financially for the trip, if you don't start looking at travel options, you don't go. How many of us has said, you know, I need to do that home improvement project. Five years go by and guess what? The roof still needs some work. So you have to plan and you have to allocate. So that's direction. Accountability. I'm a big, big fan of personal accountability. It helps holding ourselves accountable. It helps with our legacy, what we're going to do. It's easy to get distracted and caught up in the in the details of the day to day. It's easy to get distracted, a parent calling up. I don't know if this ever happens to you all, a parent calling up with a concern, school board members. That really, you know, is a principal issue. They call you up and they think you have all power. The bus was 15 minutes late. Well, you know, it it does happen. I get it. You know, I used to get those phone calls. But personal accountability, big picture. Also, school leadership accountability. One of the roles of the school board, as I'm sure you all know, is to hire and evaluate a superintendent and administrative staff. It helps with that. If goals are clear, it helps with goal setting for superintendent and administrative personnel evaluation. And lastly, and probably most importantly, is the view from the summit. Your legacy. What are you going to see? What impact are you going to make? You know, it sounds like you guys got some projects already going on. You've got an infrastructure project in in the Hill School, I believe. You've got some things that you're talking about doing. I heard you referencing budgets and that must be upcoming. Budget sessions are always fun on a on a school board. How many meetings a night do you guys have during budget session? Do you ramp up your meeting schedule during the budget process? We did in Concord. It was it was quite a bit. So the view from the summit. Next slide, please. So this kind of moves into possible topics to talk about around strategic planning and and planning and goal setting. Administration accountability. Diversity, equity and inclusion. Are we truly including everyone in our district or all different stakeholders, different diversities included? Infrastructure planning and development. Sounds like you all have a big project going on with the Hill School right now. You're getting ready to hire a construction manager. Communication within the school board and to the community. Communication among yourselves, team building, how you feel about your working relationship, how you communicate. Certainly, there are a lot of rules about school board communication and testing and all that good stuff and making sure you communicate appropriately. Communication to the community. Building greater community alignment around school board goals. You really feel that that the community understands the direction you all want to go in? Is the community involved in in the process? It sounds like you need them to be involved in the Hill School to vote for something. So do they see the vision, you know? You were talking about the design process and the architectural renderings, I believe, of the future school. Part of planning, part of getting community involvement. Do they understand the need for the funding? Talent development, talent recruitment. I I don't know about the about your school district here, but I spend a lot of time with organizations talking about talent. Both bench shrink planning, getting ready for the future, people leaving, people retiring. What's the plan around that? What's the anticipated turnover of teachers and the and the paraprofessionals, recruitment of paraprofessionals? I'm glad to hear you had your paraprofessional meeting. I'm a big fan of that. I'm a big fan of paraprofessionals. So talent development and talent recruitment. Refinement of the budgetary process and board member and community alignment. I I don't know if you all have big turnouts when you have your budget hearings with the community and people come and wonder why you're funding this, why you're funding that? Been angry at you and been happy with you. You know what happens? Why'd you do that? You know, the type trait and all that fun stuff. So does the community understand your role, what you can and cannot do? I don't know. Good questions, good things to think about. Next slide, sir. The process. The process isn't as important as the outcome. As I said, we may start out and thinking this is the direction we're going in. This is where we want to go. This is a school district where we need to spend our resources in planning and thinking. And we may discover something else. I'm the Sherpa and I don't know if any of you have ever climbed the Himalayas. I have not. Maybe it's something I should plan in five years because I'm not planning for it, so it probably won't happen. But I have friends who have. I have quite a few friends who have climbed the Himalayas and they've all hired Sherpas. They got the equipment together. They got the maps. They they gave them a brief training, things like that. They told them what to do, what to pack. And at the end of the day, they helped them climb and they also helped them do things and step on rocks and anticipate the change in weather conditions and how to climb. So that's kind of how I see my role in in being your partner. You choose to work with me in in planning and the process of goal setting. What will we discover? It's a journey. Next slide, please. So kind of how do we do it? What's what's my process? This is all nice talk, but what are we really going to do? So step one, what has been done previously? I see on your agenda, you have goal setting and and planning on the agenda. And maybe that's something you talk about every meeting. I I don't know. But what's been done? Is there a strategic plan that the school board has already? Is there is there something in writing from even 10 years ago? Is there is there nothing? Is it a comprehensive plan? Or just sticky notes? You know, does do the does the superintendent have five things on a sticky note on her desk? Does Ms. Sherman have that written down and saying, these are the things we need to do in the next five years? And and Andy's got four on a sticky note? Or is it just in everybody's head, like, I think we should really do that for the next five to 10 years? You know, the step one is assessing where we are. What has been done and where do we want to go? Next slide, please. So how am I going to find out where we are? So I'm going to meet with a list of stakeholders that you all establish, up to eight stakeholders. And I will inquire basically what everyone individually feels is important for the district to do. So I'll have individual meetings either via Zoom or in person, live close by. So and we'll talk about common themes and shared values. Next slide. So then after that, after I meet with these eight individuals, I will then synthesize these and and meet with school board leadership to make sure I'm on the on the right page, that they feel the school board leadership feels like I'm headed in the right direction after talking to people and asking a series of questions. And then we'll plan a day. I like to call it a board working summit. And we'll kind of synthesize the information from the one to ones into three or four themes. And I will now say, excuse me, as my phone is ringing. Thank you. Apologies. So I will synthesize these into into some themes. We'll have an all day working retreat and look at time, come up with three or four goals, three or four things to work on with timelines and measurable outcomes for goals for the next three to five years. Three weeks after that, you'll receive a written report of of kind of what we did at a retreat with bullet points of the themes and timelines that you all develop, that you all agree upon. This is not something that I do. We do it in partnership. But everyone will have a copy to look at and use as a working document to go forward. Next slide. So then after that, I will come back three months later to a school board meeting like this, would be my request, and ask how you're progressing on these on these themes. How are you progressing on the goals and milestones? Are things moving ahead? Are they still the themes and the goals that you all want to work on? Is something changed? Is there a change in direction? Things always have a way of changing. That's that's what one constant is change. So after that, I'll come back to a school board meeting and do a touch base would be my request. Next slide, please. So the timeline. So timeline for all phases of the climb would be three months. What does that mean? So if 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 you decide to go with me and say you decide that we want to start working with you on strategic planning and goal setting in December, which, you know, the holidays, but three months into it, we would hopefully have everything completed. Now with that said, if some people that are critical for one to ones are not available, if if we could not schedule due to holidays, due to weather conditions, if we could not schedule a day for everyone to be together, that would may extend it for another month. But really, you're looking at a three to four month project. Here's the way I see this in working with you all initially. That's like. Now for the finance committee. How much would all this fun cost? So stakeholder meetings update, board retreat for the day of the climb, the written strategic plan would be $5,500. If you request additional stakeholder meetings, say you say, Chuck, we want you to meet with 12 people. That would be $100 each for the for the additional four past the eight, if that makes sense. Follow up meeting coming back in three months at no cost. And then if you feel, you know, additional work or services, it's $150 an hour and we can discuss that down the road based upon your need. Next slide. So, big thank you for the opportunity. And there is my contact information. Chuck Crush, Vice President of Astera Counseling and Consulting, my cell number. And now I will turn it over since I'm a big fan of questions. It's your turn to ask me questions. So I will turn it over to you. Thank you. The big question mark.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, do any of the admins have any questions? Because if not, you guys can probably take off. Sure.
And thank you being my slide person and my technical consultant.
Of course.
For you to ask the question.
So we just had our NIASC visit, our collaborative conference last spring. And there were three priority areas and we anticipated all of them. One of them was a strategic plan. And we were anticipating that because we do not Pembroke Academy does not have one currently. So if this is a timeline for the school district, I guess, how would that work in terms of each individual school and how that, like, I guess what I'm really asking is does it make sense for Pembroke Academy to defer on the development of a plan until the district plan?
And that's a great question. And I will say that's almost going to have to be a collaborative answer between your superintendent, between your your school board and myself. I have an opinion. But I don't, I think really, you know, so I mean, basically.
Can you please share your opinion?
My personal opinion is it made sense for the school board to start their plan first. And then to, because your goals in my mind want to be in alignment with the overarching school board plan, school district plan, if you will. That that's my opinion. But I don't want to set your policy either.
That's what I was hoping you would say.
Okay. One right answer, okay?
Okay. It's up to you guys, but if you've had a long day. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations on day one.
Yeah, congratulations.
While they're setting up, I just had a request, you know, looking for information that's publicly available, not looking for you to, you know, share anything that's not public. But can you give us, you know, two to three examples of things that you have produced after the summit for other clients?
Sure, absolutely. So one would be in a healthcare organization. We we did a did a summit. I did one recently. I'll show that one. Where we are looking at not, this isn't. This is not an educational example. Okay, so I'll give you that. So I did a summit with a healthcare client who basically has, in Massachusetts, has some rest home beds. So they have these rest home beds that are empty. They also have a nursing home that has a waiting list. They have empty rest home beds. They have empty, they have a full and waiting list for nursing home beds. Conversely, after the summit, we decided to invest money and resources in converting some of those rest home beds into nursing home beds and going through that regulatory process and doing due diligence around that. It's not an easy process. That's that's one example. Another one I'll give you is around a for a non-for-profit organization that had a lot of a very diverse board, you might say, and had many different perspectives. So we decided that before the board could go further in in doing anything and working even on a plan, they needed to do some team building and they needed to do some, almost some cultural awareness of different cultures. So that was the number one takeaway that came out of that after the summit. Does that help?
Okay. And and just to be more specific, I was actually wondering if you could provide us with the documents that you produced. You know, I'm looking for like a due diligence. I want to make sure in really crass terms, we're not going to invest all of this time and $5,500 bucks and get, you know, a two-page bullet point, you know, something we probably could do on our own. I mean, I don't think that's the case. I'm just
No, I understand. It's a great question. I'd have to figure out how to do that without with maintaining client confidentiality and not sharing public, their their strategic plan. I don't have their permission to share it publicly and nor have I been asked to do that. So I'll have to, I'll have to get back to you in a meaningful way on that quite candidly.
Others? I'm curious. So, I mean, obviously, you're on the school boards. You understand some of the a lot of things that go on here. One thing that I've been curious about in this is, you know, with the potential for new people every year and the potential of, you know, that could change the direction of the board. How does that complexity play into, you know, a three to five year plan when you've got players changing possibly annually?
Yeah. And then also how often, I I guess, if I could just ask you a question, you guys serve three-year terms?
We do and there's two seats, two seats, one seat. So actually, this year, there will only be one seat up for reelection, I believe.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah. So I think the strategic. Yeah, so I think the strategic plan really needs to be set in a way that there's hopefully enough consensus, that it's something that between the administration and the current school board members, that the, the incoming or new school board members or different school board members, as people change. However, people's philosophy, you're right. I mean, Andy, you're, you're right. People's philosophy, people's focus is change. But if, say you're going to do an initiative and talk a little bit about doing something around infrastructure, hopefully the new school board members would understand that and buy into that and, and support kind of the work that the previous school board members have done. It's good that, you know, you guys have the model where you have two, two, two and one, I believe you said. Yeah, it's good you have that model.
If I can just comment too, having the plan is a good tool with respect to elections, you know, because it helps inform voters in terms of like, here is the current direction of the board. You know, where, where do you candidate, where do you align yourself with this direction, you know?
And Amy, that's a great point. I mean, somebody who's, you know, campaigning for school board and, and getting elected. One of the things that I did, we, we did have a plan in Concord, and I kind of took a look at that. And I kind of used that as some of my talking points around getting elected and how I would either support, add to, or change the plan.
Makes sense.
I do just have like one comment, just based on my experience. With the strategic planning that I've done, not necessarily through Chuck or anything that I've done, once you have, you go through the process and you have your strategic plan and then you do your like ninety-day or so, three to four.
Right.
After that, it's usually, in my experience, has been a one-and-done because then you have it and it's much easier to update and you just force yourself to look at it every thirty days. So it's usually just like a one-and-done process in my experience.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm envisioning, Melanie. Thank you for that. And, and I would make the recommendation, I mean, whether you, you know, go with me or not, I'd make the recommendation, if you spend money and, and spend the time, the worst thing you could do, give you a piece of free advice, in my humble opinion, the worst thing you could do is pay me, pay somebody else, not pay anybody and do it yourself, and develop this strategic plan, develop this quote "document", and have it set on a shelf metaphorically. And I've seen it done in many organizations. And people spend a lot of money bringing a lot of people in to do this. And they have this document and I, I refuse to be part of that. Like, I, I, that's kind of my pet peeve. If, if you're going to do it, just please, you know what? And basically it's designed, it's kind of a one-and-done, like, you have a consultant to help you get it going and then it's kind of up to the stakeholders to implement and measure it and roll it out. And maybe you reach back out to, to me or whoever you, you know, whoever you go with for support and help, but it, it shouldn't, you shouldn't need someone long-term.
When you say stakeholders, do you, and I may have missed this part, I apologize if I did. Is that a group that we assemble for you? Is that a group that you say, okay, I want two parents, I want two teachers, I want, how does that, how?
No, that's a great question. And that really is up to you all. I mean, I can make recommendations and say, hey, it'd be great to have two parents, it'd be great to have, you know, two school board members, it'd be great to have the superintendent and a principal, it'd be great to have a student, you know, I, I think, but I would confer with you all. I mean, I'm not going to say here's a list of people I want to talk to. That's, I can make suggestions, but I mean, this is a partnership. And, and the way I look at it, you know, you're, you're, you're hiring me to help you. But ultimately, this is your strategic plan and this is kind of what you all want.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is exactly what I was hoping for as far as, you know, time and how in-depth it was and everything. It gives us something to talk about. So we really appreciate you making the time to come over tonight. And I'll be, I'll communicate with you in one way or another after, you know, we discuss what we're going to do, but you'll definitely hear from me so that we don't leave you hanging.
That's good, no, that's great. And thank you for the opportunity. It was a great meeting with you all and I, you know, appreciate the time. Yeah, copy of my resume and the presentation. If someone wants it emailed, I can also email you the PowerPoint if you have a preference. Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Now the big challenge is going to be me putting the microphone back. Now grab my, uh...
All right. Do you, Chuck, for real, do you remember how to get out of the building?
Yeah.
Okay, it can be a little bit of a maze, first time. We've got an agenda item and then if you, if there's stuff that you think we need to do non-public, we can. Yeah, yeah, we can move on to number seven. We've got a consent agenda item.
So you'll probably recall that the Pembroke Academy handbook changes weren't ready for your last meeting because P-Y-L, or no, P, acronyms mixed up, P-A-L-T hadn't met yet. But I did distribute all of the handbook changes to the board individually. And I think that we answered all questions and the board members I heard from were okay with the changes. So we, if that's the case, we need to take official action on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the handbook changes.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
I did have just a, just a couple of things. I know we, we've already put this out to, to the families and everything, but I did want to, and obviously Dan's gone, so we can, we can talk about this at a different meeting. But I did have some questions about the early graduation, not so much the policy itself, but just I feel like we're seeing a huge increase in students who are graduating early. I mean, we've got kids who are full-fledged juniors that took forty hours of online classes in the summer and now they're seniors. And I just, I mean, I realize it's usually through V-Lax, it's on through Concurra, it's through different, and I know they're vetted in there, but I just wonder how forty credits is being accomplished in the summer. And I just want to know if maybe we're kind of, you know, I, I assume that with the guidance counselors, they're going through these, through these programs, they're making sure that these kids are getting what they need from the, but I just want to, I kind of, I guess I want clarification and maybe just a little bit of reiteration that, you know, this is, they should be getting these forty credits.
If you're okay to put it on an agenda so that Dan can speak to it directly, but I think part of the thing to remember is the switch to competency-based education isn't always seat time either, it's proving competence. But I don't want to go in depth because I don't have the specific examples, but if you want, we can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, if we could, just so that I could kind of pick Dan's brain a little bit about it.
Is the concern, I'm not challenging your concern, I'm just looking to understand it better. Is the concern, like, burnout? Or is it that the competency is not being achieved or is it something entirely different altogether?
I think it's that the competencies are not being achieved and that, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I guess there are students out there that maybe didn't work and all they did was schoolwork all summer and now they are ahead of some seniors who are walking in the door today. So I'm just kind of want to make sure that we're, that everybody's even in the best, you know, to their educational, you know.
So assuming that they, I haven't really thought about the agenda for our next meeting, but assuming that the principals won't be there, let's plan on October, first October meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion about the handbook changes?
No.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second, so all in favor of approving the changes to the handbook as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Nothing under gift donation still? Okay, so.
We're not going to take that thousand bucks for the parking spot?
All right, so nine A is board goals and strategic planning, so I guess general thoughts on, well, we heard it sounds like you might have something for non-public too?
Well, no, I just didn't know when we were, because it's like hiring and, you know, I wasn't, yeah. I, I am, I could not be more excited to hire him. I really, I just can't overstate my level of excitement. I think it's cost-effective. I loved that he's going to do most everything in terms of like the administrivia, all that stuff that we could get really bogged down in. You know, we really just need one day and then it's done. I just cannot say how excited I am. Contingent on him, like, show me the money, you know, show us an example. Because it sounds great, but we don't, like, I don't know him.
And I was, I thought when you had, when you asked him for that, if there is a conflict and he can't, I wonder if we could come back with, can you give us some of those names as references? And they might be in there already. Even if we can't see the plan, we could talk to the people that work with them.
I'm sure he can write draft and pull stuff out.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Even if it has a bunch of black lines all over it, you know.
I'm sure he can figure that part out.
Other comments?
Yeah, so what, isn't our budget five thousand? Like, don't we have a line item budget for the school board that's five thousand dollars? I thought we did.
Five thousand rings a bell, but I don't. Yeah.
Okay.
Thoughts?
I don't have a ton of thoughts, just that sharing my personal experience. It's a lot easier to make it through strategic planning in one day if you have somebody who's done it, who's not going to let you go down the rabbit hole, they're going to dig the information out of you and create what you want. That's all I'm going to say. A lot easier than trying to do it yourself. Official. I, I mean, I'm excited about it too, and I think, like Amy said, knowing that it's one-and-done, we get, you know, he does the work leading up to it, he does the work after, we do the work in the middle. I mean, I've been saying for years that we needed a strategic plan, so this is good. This is exciting and, but obviously contingent on the amount of money, you know.
Yep, I would, I would agree. I, I think I've not been as excited about this as the rest of you. But I mean, I, I liked what it is. It doesn't seem like a huge time suck. It's not a huge amount of money. Obviously, we'd have to look at, you know, what we have available. The one concern that I would have, and I, I'm not looking for really an answer, but more, you know, consideration, I guess, is when? Beginning of school year is tough and then you got October in budget. And so the first thing, when he was talking and he, and saying like three months, my first thought was, let's start this a week after the budget meeting in May, in March, you know what I mean? And then we can finish it going into the summer, be on a really good track for next year, but we're not layer. But then, Dan said what he said, and if PA wants to do their own, then I feel bad pushing ours off six months too. So that's my only consideration is, like, I've stepped back, I'm, I'm the alternate for MBC this year. Gene's doing a ton. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't want to speak for him. But that's just from, you know, November to March is, is a busy time for the budget stuff. And, and I don't know if we want to step on that or not, but it might be fine too. I've never been through one.
I kind of agree with you because we also have the parent contract and the building project, and those meetings are ramping up and we have to stay the course. If I, correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, but we kind of have to stay the course because we don't actually know until they write those to figure out if we're really going, like, we need to know exactly. So I kind of agree with you, Andy. I think doing it after the March meeting, and it really is like a, a short process. It really is, he'll do the work, we do our thing. We'll pick a Saturday, we'll have some pizza, we'll sit there in the cafeteria, we'll get done.
Him making the report even is just like, none of us have to actually type a thing.
I know.
He has, he knows the template, he like, and then like you said, it's, once you have it, it's a lot easier.
And then he's going to gain a lot from the district, right, and the board, so then if Dan's really interested, like, it'll be easier for the principals and administration if that's the route they're going to go. Do you know what I mean?
My only slight pushback on that is, who do we think the stakeholders are? And could we do like February? Because I feel like the beginning part of the work is him, not us. You know, so that like, well, budget, town, well, that's all very busy. He can be busy doing that stuff. And that way, we're not binding ourselves like in the summer.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So we can be like, done, done, done by the end of the school year. That would be my only suggestion.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
But we can also hammer out these logistics if we decide to hire him.
I mean, I guess that's a question too, is, he's one guy. I have no idea what's out there. Melanie did have one other name. I don't, I don't know if we want to like, you know, typically for, you know, if Josh is going to purchase a piece of equipment, we make him get three bids. I don't, I don't know if we want to try to find some other local people and bring them in to hear what they have to say or if we're comfortable.
I'm comfortable. I consider the one guy that, the one other guy that Melanie hammered out with no response to be like a no-response, you know, second bid. I mean, so, I mean, we can say we have two, one was non-responsive. And I think if we do our due diligence and either check references or better yet, see the work product, you know, I think we're, we're acting prudently.
Okay. So I guess I would, I would ask to hold off official action for now until we can at least hear Gene's thoughts, even though he didn't see the presentation. He can want, yeah. Only because we're all, it doesn't sound like we're in a big hurry. If we were, if we want, if we decide we want to do this now, I would say, let's move forward, but we've got a little bit of time.
I, I am in a big hurry to seal the deal and get him under contract. I then don't necessarily care when we do the thing. You know, I just, I want to cross off the list of like, are we doing it, are we not doing it? Are we doing it, are we not doing it? But in terms of action items, I think we need a report back from Patty about how we're going to fund it. We need action from Chuck on, on the references or the reports. And then, yes, of course, we need to hear from Gene.
I also don't think that he's going anywhere. He lives in Concord and has been there forever, so I.
Do we need to check with Dan? I mean, I feel like Pembroke Academy has possibly never had a strategic plan in its existence. So like, what's another few months going to be?
I think the principals will play an integral part in your strategic plan. And I think the response to NIASC, you know, they just, they just want something. And if he says, I'm contributing to a district strategic plan of which we'll build more off of for Pembroke Academy, I think NIASC would see that as movement. So I don't think it's, you know, you're going to lose your accreditation if you don't have a strategic plan in three months. It was a noted deficiency for us to work on, so I think that would be fine.
So, I will touch base with Chuck and make sure he understands what we're still looking for from him. I kind of feel like this is a, a nice thing for a work session meeting because we don't really need to talk to the principals about it. So do you, can you check the budget stuff between now and two weeks and can we talk about this then or should we wait until? I guess we make a final decision of if we want to spend this money and if we have the money to spend. Right. I don't know yet. I mean, I guess I would. Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. So, yeah, if, if he, if we, I guess I'll, I'll keep feelers out with Gene and with Chuck and like if people can't show up to that meeting or like, if that's the only thing that ends up being on the agenda, we'll cancel the meeting. But if we, I guess if you can get the budget stuff so that we have it, if he gets back to me in, you know, six hours with his stuff and we can pull it off, it's something we can cross off the list and get out of the way. Right, right, yeah, that sounds good. Okay. And I, I'm hesitating to say this part, but, uh, you know, depending on, on what the budget stuff comes in at, a hundred dollars per stakeholder doesn't seem like unreasonable to me. And eight with, you know, when you've got five board members and, and three... And eight with, you know, when you've got five board members and, and three different schools, eight seems a little low. So I would, if, if our budget allows us without, you know, not being able to spend another 10 cents the rest of the year, I would say we jack that number up a handful.
It wasn't a hundred percent clear to me whether stakeholder meant one single human being.
I was at, I was wondering that too, like, could we invite him to a meeting and we are a stakeholder instead of?
So usually your stakeholders is not us. It is not us. Yep.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be, he's not gonna count all five of us as five. And he's still gonna do that one day thing. He's stakeholders, he's talking like Dan or a parent.
I think what we're wondering is, can the principals count as a stakeholder? And like, meet with him as a group instead of Dan being one and Wendy being two and?
Honestly, I would ask him that question, because I bet you anything, he probably.
Yeah. But.
Think so that we have maximum information and can move with maximum speed. We need you to answer the question, could we spend more if we wanted to?
I get what you're saying, though.
Know how much budget information I can give you at the beginning of September. I mean, we have nothing in yet, we have no.
I think all we really need to know is what, like, our line.
Your section, I can tell you what's there, and then.
That up too, but I'm.
Well, yeah, I, I'm happy to do that, that'll be easy. But in terms of how much are we gonna have to spend? We're just starting the school year, but I can't imagine that we wouldn't be able to cover this.
Okay. Okay, anybody wanna say anything else on that before we move on? Yeah, that felt, felt like progress, didn't it? Okay, so bus routes.
All right, so Linda B made the updates. She took a lot of time out of her schedule and, and camped out at the library and did her best to get to all the students, to make sure that she had all the students that needed a ride ahead of time so she could do the routes. So she did get some add-ons and like she always does, added those stops into the route. So you have your updated routes in the drive.
Questions, comments?
I don't understand why, just piggybacking on this presentation. I don't understand why we cannot have more buses so that our students don't need to be on the bus for so long. I think it is a extremely unreasonable amount of time for the students to be on the bus. I noted the duration of the bus routes last time. I'm not gonna hold up approval of the bus routes, but I really don't understand why any of us or the bus company should feel that this is reasonable. I'd be very interested to know if there are any, you know, governmental guidelines about what is, I don't know, healthy, safe, reasonable for duration of bus routes. You know, I can, without traffic, I can drive from my house to my children's school in under 10 minutes, and they're on the bus for, um, you know, I don't know, almost an hour. And I don't think any of that is good or right, fair, healthy, reasonable, et cetera.
Not sure I have any answers for you. There are no bus drivers, that's really, I, yeah, I hear you and I agree with you.
Any other questions, comments?
Hold on though, um, so is drivers the, the, the answer? There are not enough bus drivers?
That is my understanding. We still don't have a full fleet in Deerfield. We just barely got off double runs. We had kids at school and getting home at like five in the afternoon. Yeah.
And are there, to your knowledge, are there any guidelines, legal requirements, um, you know, anything like that? That prescribes how you're supposed to manage busing public school students?
No, I'm not, I'm not seeing any. It doesn't mean they don't exist and that I can poke around and see if I can find anything. I've not seen them in the, the regular transportation statute, but they may exist, I can poke around.
I mean, I, I guess it would make me very satisfied if you as administration or us as a board could express our discontentment of the duration of these bus runs to the bus company and ask them if they're concerned that they're bumping up against any, you know, legal requirements or guidelines for how long kids are supposed to be on the bus based on the very short distances that these kids are being bused. You know, we're not talking about like, this isn't Pembroke Academy where it's the regional school system busing here.
Amy, you and I started at the same time, right?
No, you were on the board before me.
Okay, so I couldn't remember, I think you were here for this, but if not, I just, just for historical context too, I know that, uh, I think it was maybe when COVID started, I can't remember. But, uh, Deerfield was so upset, they offered to, if the bus company would give the drivers raises to attract more people, that Deerfield would pay the difference in that cost. And the bus company said no. So, I mean, this is my personal opinion and a, you know, whatever. There is not flexibility, there is, there, there's no incentive as far as I can tell, because there's no other bids. And that's, that's why my interest was piqued when we were having the discussion about the other bus options, uh, you know, at the end of last year.
Yeah, and I'm still working on that.
That's, that's my number one concern is, is just that right now there's no other option, so we don't have a lot of pushback.
That bus stop across the street from TRS is an hour ride because of the way they go. It's almost an hour ride. The bus stop across the street, TRS kids, the way they go, it would be an hour. When you could walk your kid across the street in 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Saying it for a while, but, and I know we keep, we keep struggling, but we need to, I really wish we could find someone else to bid these bus routes, but that's a discussion for another day.
Okay, anything else on that? Um, then, uh, do we have a motion? Okay, so I guess I need a motion.
Are they revised? I'll make a motion to approve the revised bus routes.
I'll second it.
All right, last chance for discussion. All in favor of approving the bus routes as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. And we added a nine C for vehicle replacement.
Sorry, I apologize too. Josh apologizes, he was unable to make it this evening. He and I have had conversations about this, and it's really difficult to get prices on vehicles because they have different options. And then the dealership will say, do you want it today? Or, you know, I'm not holding this for, until you get your bids. And, um, so this has been a big challenge for him, and I think he did a great job. So he did finally get people to commit, um, to some pricing. You'll see Newport Chevrolet was 31,620, Portsmouth Chevrolet was 37,670, and Banks was 35,591. He's recommending Newport Chevrolet, and that price includes trading in the 2010 Ford Transit Connect. And he would hope to get the, the truck by the end of the month. It's in transit to the dealership, works with the schedule and the registration. Um, and he's also asking to have the truck lettered. We have the, it says facilities department on the truck, um, for 550, and then a beacon light, waiting for a price but estimating around 1,000. So he's looking for a not, do not exceed of 33,170, um, for the truck and the extras.
You know what the balance on there is right now?
Uh, 53 to 54,000, I checked today.
And what does the format of the motion need to be? Is it just a motion to approve the request? Or does it need to be like a motion to expend from the name of the trust?
Not yet, we need to have a public hearing before we do the trust. This is just a motion to approve him making the purchase with a not to exceed number.
Okay, I'll move to approve the, um, purchase of the Chevy Colorado truck and, uh, ancillary items as proposed in the September 5th, 2023 email for a not to exceed amount of 33,170.
Wait, is there a second?
September 5th, 2023.
I'll second.
All right, any other questions or discussion?
Ask a quick question?
Yep.
What's a beacon light?
The flashing.
Oh, okay.
So you can see it, there's no storm in the parking lot. Any others? Okay, um, then there's a motion to approve the purchase, um, of the truck and the associated expenses for an amount not to exceed 33,170. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, um, so, public hearing first weekend of October or after? Okay. Right. Okay. All right, that brings us to policy.
I have not received any language changes, and I've also, um, Chief Gaskell got back to me that there's no official policy at the state level, but he did give me a two-page handout. And I also forwarded the policy to Jenny Jones and to Chief Gagnon on the fire department just to have them put eyes on it too. So I wanna get feedback before we do anything with this policy. And then the others are second reading, so if people haven't had a chance and you wanna get me any language changes before the next meeting, feel free to do so.
Okay, does anybody have questions about any of these?
Uh, just with, uh, Melanie and I were talking before the meeting, um, the bomb threat one, which I know that's what you're referring to with Chief Gaskell. I, in reviewing it, I would like to, um, I would like to work on that further because I feel like the one that we have is more specific to our situation. I mean, where the, the New Hampshire School Board one is superintendent this, and it's like, but the ours is the principal. So I'd like to meld them together, so if you can kind the table that one for now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can, okay, yeah, cuz I.
Are you, are you to the?
Yes.
Okay, so if you get those before, email it to them and they can start workshopping it and then?
Okay.
No, it's okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, that was really the only one that I saw that I wanted to make changes to.
Fine, it was just we liked some of the language that we wanted to meld them.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, I, I assumed that was usually the second call. But then the other ones, I don't know if we wanna.
I'm, I'm okay with moving forward with the other three, if everybody's had a chance to look at them. You don't.
I don't think so. I had notes that we were adopting the NHSBA version of each, is that what you had to, Carrie?
Yeah. Oh, I, you know what? I lied, I'm sorry. I do have the, the gifts and solicitation one. Ours, I don't, yeah. First line blew me away. Teachers and other employees of the board will not accept gifts from students? Yeah, so I think, yeah. Right, so I really wanna just, I think we should adopt the, uh, New Hampshire School Board Association one on that. Because there's a lot of parents that are in trouble if that's the one, or teachers, I should say.
Okay, so do we? So, so wanna make a motion for GB EBC, and then we'll decide what we're gonna do with the other two?
Sure. I.
All right, so did, did you just say you made that motion?
No, I was looking for one.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the, um, School Board Association version of GB EBC.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Great, all in favor of adopting the NHSBA version of GB EBC staff gifts and solicitations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And then we've got a recommended and an optional, does anybody have strong feelings on GA or GBB? GBB seems pretty inconsequential to me.
Yeah, yep.
I, I mean, I.
So I just, I don't know what the right wording for it, resend, okay, thank you. So I will make a motion to resend policy GBB, staff involvement in decision-making.
I second that.
All right, any discussion on that one?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to rescind GBB, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. GBB, yep. Uh, and we're, so we're gonna hold EBCC, uh, so less was GA, the personnel goals. And I didn't review that one, so I.
Yeah. Can you remind us, is that one optional?
That one's the optional. GA is recommended, the one we just, it's optional. There's a lot of G's there.
If we want that one, Carrie and I head down the NHSBA one.
So what's interesting about it is it's almost like board goals.
Yeah.
I noticed that, that if that's a, if that's something that you're interested in, you could make that part of the plan. And Amy, you've brought that up as a goal almost every year, about recruiting, selecting, employing, um, the best people that we can and fairly compensating them. So, I mean, an in-service training program, we do those all the time at the school level. Employee appraisal program that we certainly don't call it that, we have an evaluation program. So I don't know that this is.
I, I think I would be in favor of best practice in terms of governance would be to adopt this policy, because it is recommended by the association that we say we follow. And then later down the road, when we're doing strategic planning and we're talking about that phrase, which he, you know, what did he say? Like, um, develop and retain talent, um, that we say something about, you know, implementing this policy. That's what I would be in favor of, so, um, I won't make the motion just in case, like, I'm way off base of the rest of you guys, but that's my thinking.
That's kinda like what we were thinking too, is it kinda is the strategic plan, so we could tweak it later if we.
For me.
Correct.
GA?
GA.
Oh, and the Hampshire.
School Board Association.
Very.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll move to approve the NHSBA GA policy.
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of adopting, approving the, um, New Hampshire School Board Association version of policy GA personnel goals, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. I know, we're not letting that policy backlog happen again. Okay, cool. So we'll talk about EBCC another night. Uh, we can skip public comments again, and we've got a couple of informational items.
Yes. So your, um, delegate assembly is coming up in October, and you have, I put the NHSBA resolutions, proposed resolutions in the drive for you. So on the 10/3 meeting, you'll need to be prepared, um, to vote on each of those so that your delegate knows how to vote on your behalf in October. So just make sure you look those over.
And I just, I looked through them, since I'm the delegate.
Yeah.
I looked through them really quickly. I think the only one, and I'm, obviously I want you guys to go through them yourselves, but the only one that I see any maybe dissension with would be, uh, number 16. And it's, has to do with some.